Open the meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to address the board, medusa. There being no one wishing to address the board, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the meeting of May 19th and regular meeting of May 30th, both regular meetings. Any additions or deletions? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, regular meeting of May 19th and the regular meeting of May 30th, 2008. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bills. Now, you should be able to go through this list pretty fast, folks. There's one, two, three, four, five, bills. I need a motion.
Make a motion, three bills are written. Are there any additions?
Moved by trustee Burt, seconded by trustee Penfield.
I have questions. What are those payments the Waystream for? I mean, I know what it says you're for.
The four counties for July 4th.
So it's for this coming July 4th? Okay.
They won't deliver them unless they receive a payment first.
All those in favor, what would you send by?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, correspondence.
The first letter I have is from Bonnie Philia. To the mayor and border trustees, I operate a daycare center at the above address and I'm ready to express my view regarding speeding vehicles on Church Street. Speeding vehicles on the street have been a problem for years, but seem to be getting worse throughout the day. Vehicles exit from Chapperton Street and speed northward, or they come from the north and do the same. There are sidewalks on the east side of the street, however, the west side of the street is now completely developed, which means more people are crossing the street on foot. There's a heavy traffic area and I'm afraid someone is going to get hurt if traffic does not slow down. In the past, I have put flagman markers in front of my daycare center to alert drivers to slow down. They are totally ignored. I would appreciate any kind of response, suggestions you can come up with to get the traffic to slow down. Should take the board. Now, this was turned over to the police department, and I believe that they are looking into the situation they're talking about. It will be taken care of. The second item I have is to the village clerk. This was received certified by the Alcoholics Beverage Control Law, Section 64, subdivision 2-8. I am required to notify the Razzas Point village clerk that I will be leasing Golly's Lounge at Montgomery Street as of June 1st of '08. I am also applying for an on-premise liquor license with the New York State Liquor Authority. The business will be operated as it previously was. There will be no changes in the operation of the bar at the present time, other than the name, which will be changed to their last resort. And this was from Melissa A. Baker. That's just notification. And the next item I have is, we received a notice from the Plasper New York Country Chamber of Commerce. This is a 2008 hot list, and I believe, let me see. In it, under appropriations and funding for private regional projects, it states that the Razzas Point train station, restoration and redevelopment of the historic train station in Razzas Point, creating a museum, functional space for the Department of Homeland Security, and servicing Amtrak trains at the border, and enhanced Amtrak station funding required is $600,000. And that was on the hot list.
That's what Melissa went to Washington with for.
Yep. The only other item that I did receive by an email was from Jerry Bagrow, and she said that if she wasn't able to make a meeting tonight, that she was asking if she could use a village vehicle on Monday, June 9th, to go to a Champlain Valley Heritage Network meeting in Westport at 9:30 in the morning, or she'll be getting paid mileage.
She can use a vehicle if she wants to come to start to hold the prints again.
Okay, so she'll get paid mileage then?
Because that's where I'll be with the mayor's conference. Okay?
She's going to represent the village, right?
Yes, yes. She's the representative on that.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Reports of the mayor and the border trustees. I have a request from the clerk to attend the training session on June 16th, personal conference room on second floor, Clinton County. This is on personnel matters. We'll need a motion to center.
I'll make a motion to send the clerk to the training and to Clinton County Department of Personnel on Monday, June 16th.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, what would you send by?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The second thing, I'm not sure if you have this in your packet, but I got these two emails from the Chamber of Commerce, and it's alerting everybody only considering major new mandates on employees. And the Business Council of the state of New York is alerting everybody. It's called Paid Family Leave, Senate Bill such-and-such, and Assembly Bill, which sounds good in theory, will put a financial burden on a lot of communities where the plan would amend the state's disability insurance system to provide payment for 12 weeks to workers with no disability for the adoption of a child or care of a sick relative. And that, they would be paid 12 weeks off. The Chamber of Commerce and the Business Council is totally against it. They're asking if the board or the village would go, you know, and express their opinion on it, and it's all got to be done by email. And I thought that I would get an approval before the board, before I answered this. Unfunded mandate. Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway.
They try to balance the budget down, don't they? Spend more money.
Yeah, we'll be spending more money. Every employer in the state should be looking at this because it will affect every employer. This came from the chamber to me, actually it was sent May 21st, but it was not here.
You're looking for a motion or a...
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor or the village clerk to send an email saying that we're against this. Put that forward, a motion.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second one is upstate economic development. And this one here is Governor Patterson has suggested a possible rollback of the Empire State Development, ESD, dedicated forces on upstate, suggesting that the role of the upstate ESD chairman be diminished, or that the fortune, the position be eliminated altogether. And this is the guy that they appointed, that's Mr. Appointed in Buffalo, which has worked out quite well for northern New York. And they're asking that we go online again and notify the governor that we oppose this of eliminating the upstate chairman, Dan Brunson. I'll make that motion, your word.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, what would you send by?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. In your packet, and this came today, is an opinion to an lease agreement with Horizon. It's there for you people, when not to make a decision tonight, to read over, get back. It has been sent to Tom Renee. So it's just, it's there for information. And that, I believe, is it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, mayor. I have one item on the agenda tonight. The Municipal Electric Utilities Association in New York is having a northern regional meeting in the village of Messina on June 26th, 2008. Is anybody on the board interested in going to that?
I have to go. Okay, is anybody else?
I'd love to go, but I'm going to be making a...
Is it 26th? Yeah, June 26th.
26th.
That's it today, then, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, but I'm staying overnight because I have a meeting at 7 o'clock the next morning. I got to be back here in the village by at least 10 o'clock, because the next day is our vacation with beer.
That's until...
From Friday to 27th.
Wait a minute now. The meeting's on Thursday, the 26th.
Yeah.
And you have a meeting Friday at 7 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah. In Messina.
And how long's the meeting?
I will be out of the meeting by quarter to nine, so I will be back here. I already told...
You've got a little clothes, aren't you, George?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you can't miss this.
I know I can't. I've already told the executive director that, come hell or high water, I'm leaving at quarter to nine, whether he likes it or not, he should go.
All said and done.
But the meeting will probably last about an hour.
You better hang on.
Yeah, George, I can send a helicopter. That's okay. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, is Bumper going to go?
Do you want to go, Bumper?
I'll go.
I'll make a...
I'll ask the North C.
I'll make a...
Bumper will drive.
Not too?
No, he's too slow.
Francis will drive it.
He's too slow. You'll have to make reservations for Bumper. Mine are paid for. The only thing that you have to pay for me is the registration fee. Everything else is paid for by NIPA.
Oh, and reception. Sponsored by Wilson &amp; Wilson.
Yeah.
I'm coming back though, that day.
You are, and then you're going to drive yourself?
Yeah, I'll drive myself.
Okay.
Most have to leave. You don't play golf, you can go in.
No, but you're going to have a tour of the alcohol plant. If you don't play golf, you can go on the tour.
You might want to spend the night praying.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
They have a nice banquet, too, dinner and banquet.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Good PR.
I'll put that forward, motion. Two people allowed to go to the meeting and...
I think it's important to meet those people for, you know, electric...
So the reservation will be made for friends to attend...
You make the hotel reservations and then play...
Yours is only the registration?
Just registration.
Don't be late, George.
Well, I won't be.
Come out and sleep all night that night.
Who worries? When I got, when I got this this morning, I got this this morning, right? And I said, "How the hell am I going to do this?"
I think they ought to change the meeting, just for you.
I don't think that's going to happen. They already changed it from 10 o'clock in the morning for 7.
Well, that was nice, but that's right. Because if it was at 10, well...
That's all I have on my agenda tonight. Your word.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson.
Second.
Can we vote on that?
No.
Oh, okay. Do you have heard the motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by, or whatever. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
The first item I have tonight is to request an executive session to discuss electric personnel.
Second.
Second.
Second by trustee Jefferson, moved by trustee Penfield, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield, trustee Burt, and trustee Baker, and the mayor will decide.
Okay. Secondly, I would like, actually, I...
You don't have to do that one.
I'm sorry?
The second thing on your agenda, you don't have to do.
Well, we're, yeah, we do wait for meals, right? So we have to authorize that, don't we?
He's going down to get the rentalizer.
Yeah, but we're paying for his meal. Authorize that, which we normally wouldn't do. So, okay, yes. But actually, okay, yes. So the second item I have on my agenda...
Sorry, sorry.
Is to authorize Scott Bayshard to go to Albany on the 4th for the yearly calibration of the equipment for the police department, and the estimated expenditures are simply, or, no, is he taking the village vehicle?
Yes, he is.
Is he available that day? Okay. Village vehicle and meals for the day. He expects to return, leaving at 5:00 a.m., returning at 4:00 p.m. So I'll make a motion that we authorize Scott to do that.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Burt. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, what would you send by?
Aye.
Opposed?
So that's Wednesday, right? Fourth is Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I have a second one from the supplemental agenda, authorizing Scott Bayshard also to attend police department training in Malone on August 25th through August 29th. Excuse me, this is for a training and crime scene investigation course, which is hosted by the Malone Police Department. Participants will receive extensive hands-on training to develop credible skills in the area of crime scene processing, analyzing, very proper investigative process, managing and handling the scene, and standardized collection procedures. So I'll make a motion that we allow Scott to attend this training in Malone from August 25th through August 29th.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, what would you send by?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the next item I have, actually, I mistakenly told Carol for the agenda item, I'd like an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burt.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. Aye. The mayor will decide.
And the only other thing I have on my agenda tonight, I'm actually glad that Brian is here, because, Brian, do you need, in terms of what we want to accomplish in the downtown before the 27th, do you need anything from me or from us? Like, are we going to have time to get those benches and bike loops in?
Not on the downtown.
No, okay.
Probably everything on the pier. Right now, we're working on getting everything on the waterfront down.
Okay.
By the 27th. We're still waiting on the curbing from, we're waiting for an estimate from Corrado to do the curbing, and if they don't answer by tomorrow, we're going to do it ourselves.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I have him down there fixing the manholes, getting ready for blacktopping. When blacktopping comes, they're going to come through, and we can't be repairing manholes midstream, so you'll see a lot of the... This week, they'll be down there repairing all the manholes, and we're going to, once the topsoil dries out, we're going to start some of the topsoil down. And I have a meeting with Melissa tomorrow on all the benches.
Oh, okay.
We're going to put all the benches in place, get the okay, and bolt them all down so they'll be ready. We have an outlet to put in under the gazebo.
I think that's about it. I think that's about, lines it up.
So what will probably, I'm sorry, go ahead, George.
I think there's a cement apron that's got to come off the front of the road, but that's not going to go in until the paving's done.
It's already done.
Yeah, it's done.
It's done.
Oh, they did that?
Everything's done on both sides of the road.
No, no, not sidewalk. There's an apron that comes right to the highway.
Yeah, it's done, it's done.
It's done.
Oh!
Yeah.
Sorry.
The only thing we don't have, we got to put the bullet, the bollards in for the handicap parking, and we have to decide, are we going to blacktop that, or are we going to leave the stone for now? I don't...
Well, if they have a handicap, people, if they have any kind of device, if they got a question, it should be blacktopped, I think. And if anything else, it's going to be...
I mean, do you want to wait until Bernal comes through and does the blacktopping, and maybe we can have them included in, do a change order?
Yeah.
So it all looks the same?
Yeah. And it won't separate either, right?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to...
Yeah, I said that's what we were planning on doing, wasn't it? We were going to see what it...
I don't even think we ever discussed that.
Remember, we talked about it one time, though, we were going to do it as a, as a add-on.
So we're trying to get everything down on the waterfront.
Right.
Completely done for ribbon cutting.
I just...
And I didn't, I didn't know if the downtown was part of that, on the ribbon cutting?
Well, it's not really, I don't think, but I know at one time we had hoped to try to get things in by the 4th, but if, you know... I, I just didn't want you waiting on me or on anything, because Bumper and I talked about looking at bench sites and that kind of thing. I just didn't want you waiting on us or on me, that was something that you needed.
For everything on the east side of the road, we're going to re-level all the cobblestones after the 4th of July. So I was planning to pour the concrete for the benches as we go through with the cobblestone so we can blend everything back in.
Right.
So that would be after the 4th.
Just to remind you, board members, we have 20 trees coming sometime in the very, 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 very near future, and Carol is hoping that they would be here this week.
They should be, they may be.
Okay, what we need to do is, Brian had suggested that, that some are going down here on the waterfront, but I think Maple Street is going to get most of the trees that he needs locations.
What state of them are red, something?
Red and sugar maple only.
Red and green, yeah. We're going to, we want to install some on both sides of the road. You know, with the electrical conduits, everything underground now, the trees shouldn't, you know, we're going to place them where it doesn't really matter with any crossings of the road, so...
I might get that done this week if we can, get the stakes out.
Yeah. If we can put the stakes and... How many addresses are, you know, like, you want to...
I have one request that's all from one tree on Maple Street. And that's on, it's on the, going up Maple, it'll be on the right-hand side. The left-hand side really needs the most of them, but there is, this spot, I'll point it out to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Make the list.
Okay.
Okay. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Burt.
Property maintenance law. Are we ready to adopt the law, or do we want to discuss it anymore? Does anybody have a feeling of how they'd like to go with it? Mickey has outlined some of his questions concerning this. Do you all have a copy?
Yeah.
Some of these things, like number 3, a, section 3A, I don't think the village should be liable to install storm drainage to receive water run off the private property. We can't get into that stuff.
No, I don't think that we are. I think the thing that is good about it is that it's almost an exact copy of the one that we know that a neighboring community has had, has, and has had since, what, 1992? So it certainly seems to be something that has proven to be effective, and the other good thing is that Mike is responsible for both communities now in terms of code enforcement. So I think it, keeping it as close to the one that the village of Champlain has is probably easier for him to work with. I would take his, the first bullet that he has, that we had, I believe already instructed for Tom to change, right? It's not just going to be C1 and C4. We already had Tom change that, right?
Should be village law.
I think it's just really important to get something in place that we can call on when necessary. You know, I don't know, it just seems to me that since, since this has been used in Champlain for many years, and Mike is now responsible for both communities for the enforcement, it would be easier on him for them to be as close as they can be together.
Some of the questions that he has is if actually, not actually changing the law, it's just something that we have to...
Discuss and...
Put some guidelines together on what takes place. It's not changing the law part.
Right, right.
Are some of these in contradiction, like F, if you have the law, copy of the law, is the grass permitted to exceed six inches? Now, Mickey has mentioned something that either stated, state is 10 inches, is a minimum or maximum. So should we change that from six to 10? I mean, isn't something that everybody's reviewed? I brought this up in the last point, is the responsibility of party to, for tree removal.
On their own property?
Right. You can't, well, if, and if the guy, I mean, you can't.
We've always maintained that, that for tree removal.
If it's on your own property, and then if it's...
It's on the village side, we remove it. If it's on the village, if it's on...
If you got a property line and your hedges are over the other person's, obviously, you can't own the other person's property to trim your hedges. That person would have to trim it. Who'd be responsible for the, I don't know, is there a cost associated with that?
I think a lot of times, though, you work with your neighbor, right? I know when I lived on Maple Street, I went on my neighbor's property on both sides to trim my hedges. They never really had any objection. I think it was...
Well, I mean, 99% of the time, I think you try to work with your neighbors, but sometimes you, there are people in the village that, the reason they have those seeders there is so they don't see their neighbors. Good fans will make good neighbors, I guess. You know, I mean, theoretically, it could be a, there's a possibility that not everybody gets along, but we hope that they do. So are we, I guess, are we ready to adopt this?
I think we are.
I am.
Should I make a motion to adopt?
Make the motion.
So, excuse me, so what changes are, what change is being made just from C1 and C2 to all, to all the village?
Right, and that had already been conveyed to Tom.
That was originally...
But it's right on page one, section one, purpose and intent?
Very first sentence. This local authorized, isn't that great maintenance for, for the village's life?
In all zoned areas, is what it's going to be?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that the only change?
Well, F, are we going to go from six inches or 10 inches?
I'll give it at six. And I'm like, we, we can go better than what the state is. You can't go less, but you can go better. By state law. Well, there's...
Or somebody holds away for two, three weeks.
My grass is over six inches now.
But you don't have to be reasonable. You don't have to be reasonable about this. I mean...
I know you want to be, we are, we maybe as a board are reasonable, but maybe there'll be some other people in the village that are going, say, "Well, listen, I just got cited, because my grass was, which I felt was long, wasn't that long, but so-and-so's grass is, that's over six inches. How come he's not cutting his grass?"
Well, I, I think that's going to happen anyway, no matter what's happened here. You got to have two inches in there, you know what I'm saying? Somebody will say, "Well, I had to cut mine, but his is over two inches."
Well, no, but I mean...
I'm just being...
If it's 10 inches...
A plaintiff devil's advocate here.
Well, no, I'm doing the same way. Maybe I'm not understanding if the grass, if it's allowed to grow up to 10 inches, is that state requirement? That's too long.
I think in a village like this, I think it's too long. I think if you're out in the field somewhere, in a state requirement, out in a, in a rural area outside of town, fine. I think in a village this size, where properties are very close together, and a lot of people take pride in the way their property looks, I think 10 is too long.
I think most people do.
So...
I believe that sucks.
Anything else, John?
There was, I was looking, if a person has a complaint, I have to figure that is, the hearing is, if the hearing is requested, it should commence no later than 10 days, which is section seven, service of notice of violation, and letter C. After 10 days, if after the hearing came. So the first hearing, it goes to code enforcement officer? So then, on D, any party agreed by the decision of, so the code enforcement officer is going to cite a person that's violating. That person is not happy, so you request a hearing. Obviously, if the code enforcement officer already cited him, I doubt he's going to rule in his favor and say, "Okay, it's okay."
Well, no, because you, you, you know, you go to the middle of that paragraph. If after the hearing, the enforcement officer finds that, that an unusual, extraordinary, or undue hardship is occurring as a result of the property or the proportion of the property, maybe Mike is not aware of something, and this person will tour him around the property and say, "This is why it is like it is."
So then he withdraws the notice.
You can.
But if the agreed party...
He can, he doesn't have to.
Well, he, he may, but indeed, the agreed party, if any agreed party agreed by the decision of code officer, enforcement officer, made within 10 days of the decision of code officer, an officer appeals said decision to the village board and filing appropriate form. So now we got people coming in here complaining about the code enforcement officer. So we're going to be making that decision.
You get paid the big bucks. That's what you get paid the big bucks for.
All righty, I'll make a motion to have Tom her name, draw up the formal, the file, the draft of this property maintenance law, and that probably has to go to the public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we should advertise.
I need a second.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Berts, seconded by Trustee Peckman. Is there any discussion?
When should we authorize the advertising, Carol?
Well, if that's the only change he has to make, he'll go ahead and make that change, and then he'll probably get it right back to me. So I can do, as long as I have authorization, if I have time before the next meeting, I can get it in, then we can probably have it at the next meeting, and if not, a meeting after that.
Okay.
You're asked, does Carol advertise it too in the same motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any other discussion? If not, a a favor vote by you, the son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The only other thing I have is the authorization of the firm to publish a legal notice. For legal law, number one, extending moratorium on the internally illuminated signs within the village, and Roger's point is that the term of the motion.
Second, moved by Trustee Berts, seconded by Trustee Jarvisson. Any discussion? Now, this, this is the actual law that we put into effect, this will be the moratorium period, right?
Right, it'll be extended for one more year.
For one more year.
Oh, for one more year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have enough for. New, we've taken the summer off, we're giving the, the personnel on the code review committee a break.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're gonna be back hot and heavy in September, though.
All right, oh, yeah, nice, one year, all right. Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, law is a favorable vote by you, the son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
I forgot some of your team this summer off, too.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Berts, Trustee Baker.
Oh, I got it, I see they changed the order, they did those repairs on the tank.
Maybe we'll get it done, shoot another year, two thousand and ten.
I don't believe it. I'm not gonna be holding my breath until they arrive to the village, so I can say that.
I think they will get it done by two thousand and ten.
What was that?
They postponed the tank three, three, two again.
Yeah, probably six years or two.
Thanks for nothing.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Baker. Carol?
I don't have any.
Our Zen?
Just wanna let you know that the tax bill for mailed out Friday.
Yeah, no, I got mine. Thank you very much. That it? Thank you, our Zen.
Brian? Um, just on the update on the waterfront, that's where we've been working, we've been trying, we're trying to finish up the twenty-seventh, the ribbon cutting.
We will finish up, yes, be positive.
Well, if the weather permits.
Yes, well, yeah.
Electric farm is working in the substation, we have the foundation support for the Kem D split. Um, we, when we're up there looking at the steel and the equipment coming, or the materials that are coming in, we're gonna have to get back with Wyatt, and we're gonna have to have an outage to put the steel up because it's too close to the primary voltage. We're not gonna make a chance in getting anyone hurt.
That's scary.
Tomorrow I'm gonna work with Wyatt and see if I can get them to shut down two of their feeders, not their whole plant, but two major Wyatt feeders would, would, uh, we would be able to shut down the new part of the substation where this new steel works going up.
Did they say they could cross tie that so they could run?
No, now it's two transformers, and the old sub, that's the problem that we're having. We have to put the whole village on the two old transformers for a day to do, to wreck the steel. We can't be putting steel up in the air with a hundred and fifteen thousand volts over us.
Well, absolutely, great. Are we coming on the new transformer, you heard anything?
Fall, dog, every day of fall, um, they're completely going through it. I will, I will call and get an update on it, I should have had one for you, I apologize for that, but, uh. I know Kurt's been working very close with them on specifications, so the engineers have been talking back and forth on what exactly they're doing and how they're doing it, and we're just waiting for the final product to, when it's gonna come. And I had a discussion with Kurt last Thursday on this outage issue, and with this transformer coming in the fall, I mean, we might have to move one of the old transformers back to the center position just because of this Wyatt issue of splitting off Kem D. And I kinda threw that at him last week, and I asked him quite a few questions, and he asked me, can I have a couple days to think about it and get back to you? So, I'm gonna call him tomorrow, and we're gonna chat some more on what we're gonna do exactly. There's a lot of substation work to do in there, and a lot of it is around all the live primary. We don't wanna make a chance.
Oh, okay.
Safety is, uh, you know, for order. But all this network, foundation work is done.
Did they get the box in today?
No, that's, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday. The pole box or the cable?
Uh, your junction back, whatever.
Yeah, we're waiting for, uh, I have to get all Wyatt's security to unlock the gate so we can go on their property and pump out the hole, and there's a hole that they left us with the pipes that pull water. So before I do any excavating up there, I just wanna get the water table back down, and with all this rain, it didn't help.
Sure it did. That it, Brian?
That's it.
Thank you. Melissa?
Yes, well, thank you. Um, I, I'd just like to thank the DPW for their fine work along the lake shore. Brian and I walked the site today, and we could have had the ribbon cut, I mean, we would have been proud just to have the ribbon cutting just the way it is now, it's looking really good down there. Um, and thank you to Carol and the mayor, the invitations are out for the ribbon cutting, so we're just waiting now for responses. Um, we have, what? Twenty-one, twenty-four day workdays left, and I think it's, it's looking like it's gonna be in fine shape. Um, just to give you a little overview of where we are, obviously this month is, is wrapping up the waterfront projects. I'm happy to report the bolt launch contract is closed out after many, many months of, of waiting. Um, I'm, I'm looking at spending the rest of the summer doing reimbursement requests and closing out files on these projects that we've wrapped. Been talking to Carol and Carrie about putting the, those things away in the, in the archives room at the office. And then in, hopefully getting the marketing and promotion study going this summer. And then in the fall, we'll be starting our public design process for Veterans Beach, or Veterans Park and the old beach, and so getting ready for construction next year. Um, but just, that's just a little bit of an overview. In regards to the grant applications that Barton and Le Judas is working on, uh, we're getting near the, the T E P deadline, which is June twenty-seventh, same day as our ribbon cutting. Um, they sent me a, a very rough outline, uh, they're looking at a project cost of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this point for the D N H. The big question is, can the roof count as match? And I've asked them to give us an assessment on that, because if the roof can go through the winter and wait until spring, then once we're, we, you know, hopefully get the grant and are under contract, the work that we would do would make up most of the twenty percent match for that, you know, seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand, and we're looking at over a hundred for the roof. And the historical society has about fifty at this point. So, um, I, I think that, you know, that's kind of a crucial issue on this application, I'm waiting for a response on it, I have to give them a call tomorrow and see where they stand. The other application, um, the library, uh, grant program application, I talked to the mayor about that today. Um, that will be due on August fifteenth to the Clinton Essex Franklin Library System. And so I, I wasn't really sure, uh, if the board wanted me to ask Barton and Le Judas about that at the same time, uh, when I have them on the phone, or where that, where that stands.
The only thing I can tell you is that email from that, what the hell was his name, the engineer?
Uh, Mark, um, Mark, not Mark Woods.
Oh, no, right.
Anyway.
And we got an email from him, and he suggested that they go forward with the railroad station because of the deadline. And then after the railroad station, after that is done, we're gonna work on the library. Um, getting the materials that we need together for that, for that, that engineering work we need to have for the library. So that's where that stands. I'm sure that he'll tell you the same thing.
The only thing we might wanna make them aware is that the local library association has set that August fifteenth deadline, because that's ahead of the state deadline. Um, and, and a bit ahead of when I expected it was gonna be, so.
You wanna probably tell them that if they call you.
Okay, I can do that, and, uh, as, the.
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say the local library association, our application has to go from here to?
It goes to Plattsburgh to C E F, and then they review, make sure it's all set, and then prioritize them and send them to Albany, is my understanding.
The final D date?
It's either the fifteenth of September, or the, I think it's the fifteenth of September. Because I remember when I talked to Julie Weaver from C E F, she thought they would be calling them in around September first, locally. But I, you know, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent positive because I haven't looked at it in a while. But that's another situation where, um, there's really not a lot of time, because there has to be, you know, some good direction from the community about what you want designed out, you know, and, and.
I will be meeting with Barton Judas on the ninth.
Is that something that?
In fact, I invited him out to dinner on the tenth, so. We'll, uh.
Didn't get that stage yet, because we're just.
Call them then, we'll be talking right with the president.
Okay.
Because now the railroad station, we got Martin Judas, we're just talking about, we're premature to start going and trying to get a library bridge now, and you know, it's the railroad section.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's different areas, so. And either grant, both of these grants have gotta have an engineering study done. So we got them on board, when we, when we locked them on board, that's when we told them, both the library and, and the railroad station, and then when they got into it, after we signed a contract with them, they said that, you know, we gotta look at it, and you said, hey, you know, it's imperative that we get this done first, and then we'll work on that this fall.
So, but we won't meet the deadline for the library?
You're good, you're good, very easily, John.
Okay, so should Melissa?
Well, I'm gonna be talking with Barton Judas on the ninth anyway. I'll be talking right with Nick, the president.
But if I could just interject, I think that the point that, that, um, Trustee Berts is raising is probably a very good one in terms of looking at what the village wants to do, because that is a fifty-fifty grant, the library grant, and so you'd be looking at having to match half of, you know, whatever the project is, and, and, um, you know, I, I, I just wanted to pass on to you, the deadline's coming up a little closer than, than I expected it, so.
We're looking at what, well, we don't know what the cost is yet.
To have it, I don't believe, I, I don't, I have not seen a proposal from Barton and Le Judas to do.
On the library?
The work on the library, I don't believe they.
We have, no, we, we do the railroad station, and then afterward, we would go forward with that.
Okay. This is a, that grant, uh, the library grant, is a little different, because you have to have, you're gonna have to have shipper approval, and you have to have bids from contractors, so it's a, it's a very different kind of, of, uh, application. So that's why the timing on that is, there's, there's not, not an awful lot of time to get the.
We may end up, even though we do have the engineering work done, going next year.
Well, that's a.
Well, that's about the second.
I mean, we got, we got the engineering work, we got our preliminaries.
And I, I think, you know, everybody's in agreement that the library needs to have some kind of, you know, addition, or it's gotta be renovated somehow, so Wyatt, Wyatt rush it. You know, let's get, we're gonna do, let's do it the right way, along with the historical, with the railroad station, so. Get one thing out of the way, and then talk another.
One other important thing, I think, and certainly, like in, in conversations with the library board, that grant cannot be used for routine maintenance, so say repairing the roof.
Right, oh, we know that.
Yeah, we know that. Has to be an addition or something.
We have this downtown lake access project that we have to look at, whether we wanna go forward or not, we do have the money. And I believe Melissa's got some information on that.
I, I do, um, we are expecting, tentatively, that the representatives from the Office of Parks and Rec and Historic Preservation are going to be here on Thursday to set up the contract for the grant and the two member items that are funding it. And so, um, uh, we, there, that is kind of an urgent thing in terms of making a decision. On the other issue, we probably might wanna just defer until executive session in terms of, of that, but, um, so, you know, we, I guess the bottom line is, we are at, we're at decision time, in, in terms of where the board wants to go with it.
All right, that's it, all right. Uh, anybody wanna address the board, make a proposal right now? If not, uh, a motion for recess.
Make a motion for recess. Precedent.
Second, moved by Trustee Berts, seconded by Trustee Burt Baker. Call was a favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Why weren't you in that picture playing the people in the corner? Did you see the picture with all the golfers?
Well, we, well, we can talk about some.
You got a word of baseball golf, like.
We got it, oh, wait, three of them, no.
There was huge picture of golfers in the beach. I couldn't.
You know, Brian? Melissa, how are you?
Good, I was keeping the mayor a hard time today.
You were about what?